...that's for board's information about what's happening with this, and I'm going to turn to Dr. Garza.
Thank you, members of the board. You know that we've repeatedly talked about the fact that we need to provide differentiated support for our schools. This board recognized that many years ago when PSI was put into place. I think before that even, there were other efforts, Project Excel, a number of other efforts that this board engaged in. Because of that recognition that needs of our schools differ, some schools need much more intensive support than others, we support all of our schools, but that has to look different based upon the needs of our schools. That work has continued. We, since Dr. Lockhart has been on board, we have our great executive principal, that new model, a number of other people have been involved in really stepping back and saying, okay, what have we learned from PSI, Priority Schools Initiative? And what do we need to look at? And what do we need to do in terms of a redesign for project momentum moving forward? Recognizing that we still need a much more intensive support for some certain identified schools. And I appreciate the board's continued support for that. When you go and visit schools that are struggling with accountability or accreditation standards, you see full well firsthand how important it is for us to provide differentiated support for them, because they're really under a lot of pressure and they need a lot of support to accelerate progress. So, I'm looking forward to this conversation. I have actually been very, fairly involved in this as well, so I feel very good about the direction we're headed and the great team that's been involved in helping this work move forward. And I think there's some very substantial and significant improvements that have been made in this particular iteration of our Priority Schools work that we're now calling project momentum. Steve, it's all yours.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Garza. Good afternoon, members of the school board. I also am excited to be here today to talk to you about this project. Our goals for today, the first one, as Dr. Garza mentioned, is really to articulate and confirm the real sense of urgency as it relates to differentiated support for schools. The second one is to reflect and draw upon the work that's been done to this point through the Priority Schools Initiative. And finally, to outline an adjusted model that really hones and focuses our work to the places where we believe it's needed the most. Before I get going too much further here, I'd like to just introduce and thank a few people. First of all, Mark Greenfelter and Terry Dade, two of our executive principals, who are also, not only in regions, but are also working with school improvement efforts. They have been instrumental and key to really driving this improvement model, and I'm really excited to be working with them, to have them aboard. Certainly, our folks in ISD, starting with Kim Dockery, Sloan Presidio, Craig Herring and Jay Naco, Kathleen Walts, Laura Elliott, also in Title I, Betris Hoffman, our region assistant superintendents and our region executive principals have all been very helpful in weighing in here, as well as Kristen Michael and Susan Quinn from a financial aspect. I'll get to our principals and teachers in just a minute, but I say all those folks and thank them, because not only have they been a part of that work, but they've been a part of the thinking. Because sometimes, in a big school system with lots of initiatives going on, we tend to get in our own way, where somebody might be providing an initiative to a school and somebody else might be mandated by the state to do one, and somebody else might have a great idea over here. And what we wanted to make sure that we did, in places where we have some of our greatest challenges, that's really the last thing that they need, is an uncoordinated effort. So we've been working very closely together, very carefully, about the kinds of supports we want to put in place and how we're all knowledgeable about that, so we can work with each other and work in tandem to provide the kinds of supports we need in our schools. I'd also like to thank, we have, Alex was here earlier and he did such a good job, I asked him to stay. Now, we had planned on having him here. Alex from West Potomac High School and Don Hendrick from Woodlawn Elementary. Throughout the year, we've had support teams, central support teams, working with our schools to a much higher degree than we ever have previously, as part of our sort of ramp-up effort and improvement effort. And we've learned a lot, and we've listened a lot, to the feedback that our principals and teachers have shared with us as it relates to what they feel they need to improve. So, the work here that we're going to present to you is really a cumulative effort of lots of great thinking, but also directly at the needs of our schools, hearing it from our principals and teachers. All right. What I'd like to do is grab the clicker here. Great. So, I'll just take a brief minute to remind you about the Priority Schools Initiative, started several years back. And really, the goals of PSI were to continue progress to close achievement gaps, continue improvement on SOL tests, and the attainment of AMO's, annual measure objectives, and accreditation. It originally started with 30 schools and then expanded ultimately to 47 schools. And the supports that were included in the PSI initiative were school turnaround specialist program, support teams, instructional coaches, and professional development. We've gleaned many things over the years from that initiative, one of which is the importance of the role of instructional coaches. These are folks who work tirelessly at building the capacity of teachers in their school to improve instruction. Instructional coaches are very helpful to our schools, particularly in schools where we have struggling achievement, or we have larger numbers of newer teachers, or we're trying to build that instructional capacity. The central office support teams have been critical to our schools for feedback, for ongoing support, for help, as well as the recognition that none of this can exist without a culture of collaboration, where a culture of professional learning communities exists in our schools. Some other things we've learned, and you've heard Dr. Garza say this, or at least I have on a number of occasions, is that Fairfax County Public Schools is not a system of schools, rather, it's a school system. And so, one of the things that we learned about through the PSI initiative was that really no specific school improvement strategy was able to be sustained or replicated. And that wasn't on purpose. The initiative got broad and it got varied. And when you're trying to support something systemically, and you've got lots of different models out there, it gets hard to sustain and hard to support. And so, our new thinking, as you'll see here in a little bit, moves us more toward a model that looks more like from a school system perspective. The impact of specific PSI outcomes were hard to measure. Part of this was due to the fact in the changes in the SOL assessment in the 2011-12 school year, which really, right in the middle of it, sort of skewed the data and made that very hard to measure what was effective and what wasn't. As I mentioned earlier, the original intention, all very good intentions with PSI, to improve instruction and build capacity, but as we, as that initiative spread and went to more and more schools, the resources thinned and got a lot broader, and it became more of a resource-based model as opposed to an instructional improvement model. And the last piece that I'll mention, one of the things that we didn't learn that we're seeing now as a need is, the initiative did not include high schools. Mark is, Mark Greenfelter is here. He's going to talk a little bit about some of the background around accountability, our current reality as it relates to accountability, and just sort of a refresher on some of the things that we're responsible for.
Well, good afternoon. Just to highlight a couple of things as we go through, so we all have a common understanding of the state language as we go through the presentation, a couple of things that are important. We've heard the term focus schools before in Fairfax, and sometimes that means different things. But, in terms of state accreditation and the VDOE, a state-focused school is a Title I school that is in the lowest 10% in the entire state, based on subgroup performance. And that's a calculation with AMO and gap points, and it's a little bit different for each school. The next group of targeted schools in a higher priority would be the priority school status for states, and that's the lowest 5%. As of now, we currently do not have a priority school this year. Then there's the accreditation with warning that we're familiar with, and there's Years I, II, and III, and those areas are English, math, science, and social studies. One of the things that we're coming up on, and you're going to see in the presentation, one of the urgencies around project momentum, is conditional accreditation when you enter Year Four. One of the only ways you can, the only way you can get conditional accreditation is if the school goes through reconstitution, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute. If you elect not to go through reconstitution, or the state does not approve your plan, then you go into accreditation denied. So accreditation with warnings, Years Three and Four. And the reason Year Three is up there is because you actually start the planning process, whether you fail or not, in Year Three. So that's kind of an important point to note. So in Year Four, if you go into Year Four, you have to apply for conditional accreditation with the VDOE. There's a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education and the FCPS School Board. The superintendent is required to attend quarterly meetings to present to Virginia Board of Education, and they cannot send a representative. And the key piece for us is that conditional accreditation requires reconstituting the school. And based on the state language, as you can see, reconstitution involves structural change in leadership, staff, student population, and/or instructional programming. They are not specific as to what that is. That's up to our school board and the local, the state Board of Education to come up with a plan around that. But obviously, it's extremely serious. And then if, again, if the accreditation is denied or not sought, then you automatically go into accreditation denied. So this is, I think, the really kind of the reality slide. You know, what is our reality going to be next year? And it's very serious. When you look at, we, this is based on the predictive data that we have, based on where we believe they could land up after their SOLs. So this is not definitive, but it's going to be very close to this. And obviously, we're making predictions based on, based on data that is an assumption of how those schools are going to test this school year. So again, we could do a little bit better or a little bit worse than this. But eight schools will be in Year Three of accreditation with warning, so that means we have eight schools that would have to go through the process of planning as if they weren't going to make it in a potential reconstitution the following year. Nine schools will be in Year Two. Seventeen new schools will be in their first year of accreditation with warning. The five schools identified as a state-focused school, that is a definite, because those schools are in Year One, and it's a two-year process. So, we will have at a minimum five schools in that status next year. And based on the gap points and the data that we've looked at, it is highly likely that we will at least get one priority school unless some significant progress is made.
Mark, is it true that what we've done here in order to make some pretty strong predictions, because we have to move this forward, because we won't have some of this data available to us until the summer? And that is, we've applied the next year's accreditation standards to this last year's performance? Is that correct?
Correct. So we assume that they would-
Assume everything's the same.
Assume everything's the same, they would hold firm, and then, even with the three-year average and those kind of things, this is where they would land. So, sometimes you hear that the three-year average is going away. That's not accurate. The three-year average is still in place. We're just losing the benefit of, three years ago was the last year before the test change, that we had the really high test scores. So that kind of bump, so to speak, is no longer going to be factored in, but it's still a three-year average. So, Dr. Garza is exactly right. The calculation was based on, if the school held the same this year, where would they be based on what the state accreditation standards are?
Thank you, Mark. So, recognizing our realities and the accountability measures in place currently, listening to what our teachers and our principals and our staff are sharing with needs moving forward, we really asked ourselves then, how do we take what we've learned and hone our efforts? And move our most challenged schools forward? So what we'd like to do here forward, now that we've laid a little bit of background, is talk a little bit about what's involved with project momentum moving forward. The real philosophy is still that we want to provide supports, and we'll continue to provide supports for all of our schools in a differentiated fashion. However, the resources that we previously used for Priority Schools Initiative are now primarily focused on our schools with the most intensive academic needs. And we're going to get into how we identify that and what that looks like here as we move forward. Mark?
So basically, we have our tiers of support, which is, we're trying to create project momentum around the same expectations we have for schools, and that is having a system of support that's based on tiers. So, we begin with the universal tier, and that is basically all our schools that are not, that do not have any accreditation issues, they're making all their gap points, no AMO issues, the schools that are pretty much getting it done at a pretty high level. And they will typically get the same supports that they've always gotten, support through ISD, support through the cluster, the region office. Then we have our targeted schools. Now, this is kind of the group that partially was in PSI in the past, and those are schools with accreditation and/or significant gap points that are likely to become intensive schools. So those are the ones that we really have to watch. And then we get into our intensive schools, which are 15 to 18 most needy schools, and those are the ones that, as you saw in the previous slide, would be basically going into Year Three or Year Two of state accreditation with warning. And obviously, to avoid reconstitution, we have to do something extremely urgent and quickly around that, and that's why they would get the most support in terms of being intensive schools. So if you look at what we've done in the past, if you look at the tiers of support, so our previous priority schools, we had schools that received those supports that were all over the map. And really, if, especially if you look at those universal schools, we had schools that were receiving significant support, that probably were, could have maintained their high scores and those types of things without the support they got. And, some of those schools, you know, the role of an instructional coach is to go in and really work yourself out of a job. That's really the goal, is you want to go in, provide the support necessary, and then move on to the next school. And, you know, hopefully you're there, you know, two to three years, and you're going and working on the next school. So that's a really important piece to look at, why maybe some of those schools received support that no longer need it.
I think this slide's really important. If you'll go back, and you're probably going to talk about this in just a minute, the scattergun approach makes it very, very difficult to, number one, down the road, measure effectiveness of what we're doing. If we're much more, much more strategic about how we're allocating resources to the schools that most need that, then we can also measure that. And then those practices that really work in terms of moving the needle and accelerating student improvement, then we have an opportunity to take those to scale and use them and benefit from them in other places. I also believe that if we're much more strategic about intensive support in certain schools, then the support that's being provided through the regional offices from more of a universal perspective, you know, right now, they're trying to be everything to everyone, and this helps us be much more focused in how we're providing support.
Absolutely. And that's a great segue into this slide. So really, it is about being more prescriptive for the more intensive schools. And one thing that I really want to highlight for the board is that targeted schools are still going to receive a great deal of support. They are still going to receive an instructional coach, and they are still going to receive funding, like they did this year, to help support teacher planning, further collaborative practices around looking at student data and incorporating new curriculum needs. So that is not going to change. What is going to change is that the intensive schools will receive that as well, but also some additional supports. And hopefully, by restructuring the way that we're looking at our most needy schools, rather than using kind of a scattered approach, is that now the regional office and instructional services can hopefully get to more universal and targeted schools than they got to before, because we'll have a different resource approach for those intensive schools, which is really important, because the goal is to try to keep schools from becoming targeted, and more importantly, the targeted schools from becoming intensive. So it's, how do we restructure that so that we can better allocate all the great resources that we have within FCPS? So if you kind of look here, this is, and Terry's going to take you through a little bit more detailed look at some of these. But in the intensive schools, it really does need to focus on 15 to 18 schools. Otherwise, we get into a group of schools that's just really too large to manage and focus on intensely. So we want to look at those most at-risk schools. We really want to have a sustained research focus on these schools, and we've done a lot of research and talked to a lot of folks on what are some of the most effective practices out of there, using our own, closing the achievement gap strategies, and trying to really merge project momentum with the best things out of PSI and our own closing the achievement gap strategies. So, creating a timeline that's going to make sure we start the school year with an improvement plan and process, unlike what many of our schools now, and, you know, you can kind of see the smiles around the room, like we get the school plan turned in in November, and we're already like a quarter through. But it, there's a cost with that, and so we feel like we have a really good plan going forward to make sure that our schools are going to hit the ground running with our most at-risk kids. A dedicated support team to focus on just those schools, again, helping to free up resources within the system to work on all the other schools in the targeted and universal needs. And then, Terry's going to share with you a really good example of what the expected outcomes would be for these schools. So you don't get all this support and help without, on the other end, having some really tight outcomes and being held accountable. And I think what we have makes a lot of sense. It's much simpler than the PSI model, and it's very much in line with the new state language that's come out around student achievement that the Virginia Board of Education approved. So, we feel like we're actually ahead of the game in what the potential changes are going to be in terms of state accreditation. So, that's kind of where we are with that. So, we're going to have Alex Case share a little bit about his perspective about the, what he's been through this year in terms of support. And I think that's, it's very important for the board to hear the progress that we've made, although we are looking at moving forward to project momentum. There has been a lot of great work done this year with PSI and a collaborative effort in terms of instructional services and the regional offices supporting schools that I've never seen before in my 24 years in Fairfax County. It's just been remarkable, and I think the comments and things that we've heard from principals and certainly my colleagues have said it's the best they've ever seen. So, I think it's really good to have a practitioner's approach of how that has helped him be very successful this year in his students.
Absolutely, and I think I would start by noting, you wouldn't be hearing from me if this was last year, because high schools were not a part of the traditional Priority Schools Initiative. So, we're very grateful at the high school level for this planning and programming, because schools like mine with a large range of socioeconomic levels and experiencing rapid changes in demographics really do need strong support, because we see ourselves as on the front lines of changes that may ultimately impact all of Fairfax County. I'm here today because West Potomac is in Year One of accreditation from the state. We earned a 69.6 overall on math, and we needed to hit 70. So, though I'd very much not like to be here talking about this initiative next year, and that's the goal, there's a lot of people in this room and in the system that are helping us to get there, and I wanted to share with you what that experience has been like. One of the things that Mr. Greenfelter and Dr. Lockhart have shared is, that are really true keywords, are coordinated effort and not scattershot. And we've started going there, and I'm really encouraged by the ideas about how to finish that journey going forward. So, I'm most excited that we've started to make this shift to a more common sense approach to resources that are targeted both from a classroom level and a leadership level. And on a leadership level, I'm fortunate to have great support from my region office. Not just saying that because Debbie's in the back of the room, and I'm on evaluation this year. But, you know, in addition to Debbie, and I have the benefit of two executive principals, and Grace and Mark have both been helpful in really charting our journey for this year. And from a school improvement angle, I can say, I've had conversations with Mark on professional collaboration expectations for my teachers, taking a look at our school intervention systems, rallying resources for on-time graduation programs and support. And these were conversations that I was pretty much left to my own in the old model. So it's been great to bounce those off of somebody that's done it before, and has had some success in those specific areas. In terms of how else it's been different, I think what we're seeing is truly capturing the best lessons learned from PSI as we reposition ourselves for the future. And I'm embarrassed to say that as an assistant principal, I worked in a school that did take till the middle of the year to write that school improvement plan. And we just know that's bad leadership practice, to not have a roadmap to start the year with a clear journey of what's going ahead. I'm also excited that with support, we've not only written the school improvement plan based on the data we identify at the end of the year, we've also written the professional learning plan to talk about what supports our teachers and our teams are going to need to achieve the school improvement plan. It takes both pieces hand-in-hand being done, and what they're going to talk about with the upcoming model, I think, recentered us on that balanced approach to school improvement planning and professional learning planning. Knowing that we were headed into Year One of accreditation, we took it very seriously. We know it's a small delta to cover in our math challenge, but we wrote our plan. We called in instructional services and our region leadership team to review our strategies, and we asked, is there anything that we haven't thought of that we really should be thinking of? And the result of doing so early made for a very, very productive conversation. We went through our paper audit with the state. They're there to take a critical look and ask what's wrong with how we got into this situation. But because we had a clear and articulated professional learning plan and school improvement plan, the state was really able to laud the efforts that my teachers and my teacher teams had started taking, and they took the recommendations that we had put in forward and made those codified as the recommendations for our school, as a Year One school. So, really what I'm seeing is there are a number of must-do leadership steps. I think synchronization is, further synchronization is really key. To be completely blunt and honest, there were times this year when we would call and ask, could we do something like a walkthrough? And instructional service was ever so gracious in bending over backwards to find a way to say yes. But I saw that it was hard for them this year, because we have schools that were in Year Two already, that needed to position themselves and plan for Year Three. And so synchronization allows us to really put the resources in places that we can help us in that true response to intervention framework. So, I'm encouraged to see that some of the lessons learned have become institutionalized, and that we're triaging evolving needs as we build into school culture. And we talked this morning about culture change a little bit. Those are the things that I believe are going to sustain our achievement and really close the gaps over time, and I'm thankful for this journey we've started.
Thank you, and we'll shift over to Terry. I tell my high school colleagues, I said, if I was still a high school principal, I'd be down at West Potomac once a month, learning. Every time I talk to Alex, I learn something new. He's doing some amazing stuff.
All right. So now, we're going to shift into kind of the nuts and bolts and the specifics of project momentum. So first, we want to start with the criteria that we established for identification of our intensive schools. So that's the 15 to 18 schools that Mark spoke of. And there's four areas that we really paid close attention to. That's the accreditation status of each school. The Virginia Department of Education-focused priority status, we currently have six focus schools in Fairfax County. The gap points, which as Mark explained, the measurement by which Hispanic students are supposed to achieve at a 65, where did the school come in in their proficiency, and what is the gap between those two numbers? And then missed AMOs, so that's any subgroup, whether it's special education, English language learners, free and reduced lunch status, things of that nature. How many of those subgroup measures were missed for that year? With that list, we still felt that it was too large to really have a narrowed and focused and intensive plan for the upcoming year. So we identified a few automatic qualifiers. One was if a school has been identified by the state as a focus or a priority school, that they're automatically qualified for intensive status. Again, just to jog your memory, that's the lowest 10% of Title I schools in the state is how you are identified as a focus status school by the state, and the lowest 5% is priority status. We felt that those were a pretty big deal. The second was any school that was entering at least Year Two of being accredited with warning in reading or math, where it was an automatic qualifier as well. Science, we believe that there will be some movement at the state level of what the expectations are from the state with regards to accountability in science. So we did not include that as an automatic qualifier, because we know that there's going to be some messaging coming from the state. And we, like Dr. Garza said, in order to get our schools prepared for next year, we had to get out ahead of not waiting until the state lets us know what they're deciding, and also not waiting for the scrubbed SOL data. So we're using our best predictive measures as possible. One of the significant shifts from priority schools is really identifying what is the improvement strategy going to be for our schools.
Terry, if I could interrupt you real quickly, go back to that previous slide, just real quick. The reason this is important, it's not a random determination of who gets the most intensive support. And you remember that scattered kind of, you know- And you remember that scatter kind of, you know, chart earlier, those were real priority schools. They were kind of all over the map. So, what we're saying is the sanctions and the, the ramifications of not meeting these either state or federal accountability standards are so severe or so significant that we really need to make about the most intensive support about this. So, it's not someone calling and saying, I really want to be a PSI school or, or a momentum school. We're saying we have objective criteria that, based upon data, that determines who gets in the most intensive list. And so, I just want to reiterate that this is, I believe, the only way really to determine who gets the most intensive support and that's objective criteria. Thank you, Terry.
So, looking at improvement strategies that have been implemented across the country, one of the things that Mark stated that I want to reiterate is that there is no one answer out there. If there was, I would have written the book. Mark would have written the foreword. There, there is no one, there is no one, there is no one strategy out there. So, we were really looking at something that would be very pertinent to each and individualized for each of our schools. So, instructional rounds comes out of the medical practice of the medical rounds of really looking at an outside group we will partner with, who is adept at turnaround leadership development and turnaround work across the country and internationally. And they really walk the school team through, how do you identify a problem of teacher practice and a problem of student learning that's specific to your school? And then that team works on action plans that are short, short-term goal measures that you identify what those problems of practice are as a school team, come up with an action plan to address those concerns, and then come right back as a school team to reflect on how it went. Are we making progress that we want to see as a school? So, instructional rounds is going to be the focus for the elementary schools identified as intensive schools for next year. I personally, I have personal background with this in DC public schools and I think Mr. Velkoff said it well of doing the root cause analysis. Going into a school and say you need PD around X without really not knowing what's the true reason or the true problem of practice that's going on in a classroom can lead a school down a pathway that's not really going to lead to significant growth gains. So, that's the methodology behind instructional rounds.
Let me add to that. I've had a lot of experience with instructional rounds as well. It's an improvement process. It's an improvement strategy that I'm hoping down the road we'll develop our own internal experts that can go into a school and really help them learn this process for improvement. The reason it works, I believe, and it's worked in many school systems across the country, is because it's a valid process for improvement that engages teachers in a meaningful way in the improvement. It's not we're coming in and doing something to you. It's really engaging the teachers in identifying the problem of practice and really engaging them in helping to develop a strategy and follow-up for an improvement. What's really neat about that is once you've also trained that school in this overall improvement process, they just get better at it every year. And so, they can take on the next thing that they want to get better at. And they have a process for how do they go about learning about that, measuring progress around that goal each, each year. So, you know, it's, it's been supported by the literature across the country and has really made a difference in a lot of the, what, what many call the turnaround, you know, turnaround schools. So, we'll be happy to answer questions a little bit later on if you have more questions about instructional rounds, but it's, it's a great improvement model.
The second model is for our secondary schools identified in the intensive tier and that is going to be school improvement through literacy. The best example of that is Brockton High School, which has received national and international recognition as being the lowest performing school in the state of Massachusetts and then all of a sudden getting accolades across the country for what they're doing to serve all students well. And it really is focused on the literacy that you need to be proficient at, not just in your English classes, but also how it's exhibited in your science, math, and social studies courses and how important and critical sound literacy skills are for your future, future development. We had the pleasure of visiting this school and the other takeaway that I think Dr. Garza hit on is that the school really has to own it. That it's the school team that really comes up with what the professional development is going to look like in coordination with the, the folks from the organization and coming up with common rubrics that helps to solidify the professional learning community that we're not operating in silos, but we're really looking at what does literacy development and proficiency look like across departments and curriculum? So, those have been some important improvement measures that we've seen in, in other schools.
That includes like open-ended response writing because we know that writing is thinking. That structure being very thoughtful and consistent around classroom practices and procedures, like for example, the writing down of the objective that students are going to be learning today and note-taking, the way that it's done across all content areas. The Brockton High School model, keep in mind that school's 88%, 90% poverty, over 4,000 students, so it's a huge high school. The principal, Sue Sakowitz, who was principal that really helped take them to where they are today, will actually be the person that will help us in our high schools and she's a force to be reckoned with. She's something else. So, some of our schools have already begun this work and are already seeing a major difference in, in what they're seeing in terms of student engagement and overall learning.
And in both of these supports, there will be principal leader, leadership component of, there's a lot of moving pieces when you're doing turnaround schoolwork. So, developing those turnaround leader competencies to really make sure that we're remaining focused on the work and making the right leadership moves to achieve the gains that we want to see for our students in these schools. Some of the other supports and expectations would be, the accelerated school improvement plan timeline would be an expectation for all of these 15 to 18 schools. So, we'll engage them in reflection process at the, the end of this year, begin draft development of that school improvement plan over the summer with the goal of having a school improvement plan at the school level in place by the time that teachers walk in on August 28th. So, Mark explained it very well that coming up with the school plan delivered in November makes the work a little bit more difficult. The school support teams, we began that work this year of having local school level members, so teachers, assistant principals, instructional coaches, and folks from instructional services, Department of Special Services, and the region office really come together to review the school plan and come up with action plan that would see the work through. The benefit of having the school support teams is that there was someone at the table from the math department if there was a need for math professional development or thinking around what's the next step for improving our math instruction. And having a conversation with that person right there at the table to say, our teachers need this, knowing that a strategic planning day was coming up, we could arrange a professional development for that group of teachers to be implemented rather than waiting for those teachers to sign up for coursework and things of that nature. Staffing, there will be priority for early hires and general hiring for our intensive support schools. We're putting an emphasis on the importance of teacher leaders in these schools. We have had teacher leader grants in Fairfax County in the past. So, we're looking at how do we identify those teacher leaders in our buildings to really help move the work forward. As great as Dawn and Alex are, they can't do it by themselves. They need those teacher leaders in their schools to see the work through. So, we're really looking at making this a competitive process for each of these schools, but really identifying those key teacher leaders who will help move the work forward.
And we believe this is an opportunity for us to, down the road, for other schools, for us to be thinking differently about teacher leadership. You're right, as, as Terry said, you can't move a school forward on accelerated timeline without teacher leaders being a, a major part of the work. So, we'd like to think, have these schools at least start and think differently about the traditional department head or team leader, that it's more than just, I'm the person purchasing the materials for the department. It's really about them becoming teacher leaders, that we invest in them, that they're engaged in the meaningful planning work at the campus level. And I really think it would set the stage down the road for us to think differently about that for all of our schools down the road.
And we hope to begin that work this summer, that we would bring those teacher leaders in with the school leadership team as a whole to really begin that school improvement planning process, how we're going to function as collaborative learning teams and a professional learning community at these schools and really have the plan in place moving forward from August 28th. A few other pieces with staffing is making sure that there's triple T allocation for these schools to have two collaborative team meetings per week. In the elementary school level, some of these schools are having achievement concerns in both reading and math and having an every other week team planning process just is not frequent enough to really move the work forward. So, how do we make sure that we set these schools up for success by having the staffing and resources available that they can really have those team meetings for particularly reading and math every single week? Embedding professional development, professional development into those meetings and really being consistent with some of the best practices that we've identified for the schools. And then an instructional coach for each accreditation area of warning, that the instructional coaches are absolutely critical to this work. So, if a school is accredited with warning in reading and math, that there would be an instructional coach focused on reading, an instructional coach focused on math. Almost done, just the last piece is expected outcomes. So, benchmark measures are going to be developed for each school to meet accreditation and/or AMO goals. So, it's not going to be a blanket, every school must achieve 77%. At the end of next year, it's going to really be looking at each school's current performance, where we need them to get to, and then setting achievable yet rigorous goals for them moving, moving forward. There is, like Mark stated, a lot of conversation about this at the state level of how do you set progress goals, but at the same time making significant progress towards those goals as well. So, we have just one example just that we've been thinking through. So, the benchmark set by the state is 70% for accreditation in math. If a school came in at 52% at the end of this year, scrubbed SOL data, what would we be thinking would be appropriate, yet significant progress moving forward towards that accreditation benchmark? Mark painted a very clear picture of, we don't get six years to make slow and steady progress. So, what would some achievement goals that would be rigorous, yet attainable by the school? So, thinking of, I was a principal of only Title I schools, so we know that a 10% reduction in failure rate gets you measurable progress identified by the state. If you looked at this example, 10% reduction of the failure rate, the benchmark for the school would be 57%. The following year would be 62. The following year would be around 66. Do the math, it's going to take four or five years for that school to meet the mark of 70% and that's just not right by the kids in that school and it doesn't really move us ahead at the rate that we know is possible. So, we were looking at what would a measurable goal of 61%? And this is just an example, there's, we would be looking at trend data, what's going on performance-wise over the past three years. So, there's lots of examples, but we just wanted to let you know that we would be looking for schools that are in the intensive group. We would expect them to have accelerated growth compared to other schools who are in their same, who have exhibited some of the same challenges. So, school A that has X percent of students on free and reduced lunch, X percentage of mobility rate compared to a school that's not receiving the intensive supports, we do expect our intensive schools to make accelerated growth compared to those schools. All right, and one of the things that we stated from the beginning is that all schools would continue to receive support. So, while intensive schools will receive the most prescriptive support, we'll also be providing support for our targeted schools. They'll receive an instructional coach. They'll also have some expectations around collaborative planning and establishment of professional learning communities at their school and making sure that they're the most highly effective as they can be. And continued support from instructional services that we've seen pay off in great dividends this year to really focus their attention on some of those targeted schools moving forward so that those targeted schools do not become intensive schools in the future. All right, so before we open it up for questions, I wanted to turn it over to Dawn Hendrick, who's the principal of Woodlawn. As Title I colleagues, I know we benchmark off of each other. We would share hiring strategies with, with each other and what was going on in our schools, particularly around the areas of reading. So, I've always looked to Dawn as someone that I, I pick her brain every now and then as we were in PSI together. So, she's just going to give you her perspective on the supports moving forward.
I'm excited to be here, but in the same sense, I'm a little bit nervous to be here as well because when you're looking at the very first slides, when you want to put a face or a school to, to the numbers, we're one of the eight that are selected to be in year three for next year. And the story behind that is last year, we were in warning in science and we grew by 20-something, 30, 35% and went out in science and we went in warning in reading. So, we're year two. Next year, we're predicted not to make it in reading because our scores were around the 62, 63% and we have to get to 75%. And although we're expected to have great gains, we may not make that 75%, which will put us in year three. So, we've been working really hard with our school support team to, to make it. My goal is to not be eight, but to be in that eight, but we may be. But I'd like to backpedal and start with, I, in June will be, I was not elected principal four years ago. My very first day on the job, I started a couple days before my contract and I was actually sent to UVA, to year two of the priority school. I think that's where I met you for the first time, Terry. And that was a great learning experience because it was 20 schools where we were all able to focus on great practices such as really being tight on the collaborative learning cycle and to be able to figure out how we will identify and put students into intervention who really need it and monitor the progress of all our children. And we did that and then by the time we became priority school and then priority school two, we were really honing in on each other's practices and learning from each other. But that did not specifically target each school. And this year, what is so different is the very first intensive school support meeting that we had, we had a team of, I think, 12 people come to our library, including Dr. Larkhart, Mark, Debbie, Grace, Kathleen. We had a ton of people there and it was, it was, they listened to every single part of Woodlawn, our true story. Our data is great as it was in some areas and not as great as it was in the other areas and they became an extended or a very personal member of our team. My very first year, we, we found out like in maybe January, February, that we'd have to take our online SOL testing for the first time. We had no computers, so our school support team then brought computers from Wilton Woods for us to test and they took it away. And they were there to help and listen to us, but we were not targeted in specific. This year, the people who are assigned to us, I feel like they are part of us. I even have Mark and Grace helping me with decisions that you have to make as a principal, helping with feedback. Are you seeing the same things I'm seeing? So, I've had Jay Nocko walk through the other day. Dan was in the library not too long ago and saw my ago and saw my teachers' intensive support on literacy, it's breathtaking. They went and they learned from our ESOL support teacher, how important literacy is to be seen throughout the school. I was sharing that with Jay, and talking about concerns that we have with just our library program. So, now we have a person from the library, from the library information services, who's on our support team, and we have a whole intensive plan on how we will make that even better. I've had, when you talk about how these supports will make a difference, so we were able, since we have an ESOL person on our team, we're able to go look at a model ESOL school. We're able to have Jana come and sit with each one of our collaborative teams, and talk about specific ESOL needs that we have, and what skills and strategies we can use to hone in on those. We've had Sarah, who's in the language arts office, create, with my reading specialists, who are wonderful, who will be helping with the literacy possum and everyone else, become a number member of their team, and she actually sat down with my reading teachers, and helped us tier the professional development for each one of the teachers in my school. So, the people who are incredible and know how to do it right, how are they even targeting more to get children to move? We've had the math, we've had Jennifer from the math office come, and do professional development during a strategic planning day on number talks. And then, we also, she knows I was struggling with our first quarter data in sixth grade, and it was, it was just, it took me for a loop. So, she helped me think about what we will do, and the plan that we put into place, so she's there supporting us. And the most important thing is, my teachers know where we potentially be next year, there's never a surprise. They know about the rounds that may be coming, they know about the feedback that they'll be getting from teacher leaders just like them, and they're excited. Because they're able to get feedback from other people just like them, this was the first time in all four years that I've actually gotten emails from my teachers thanking me for the professional development that they have received this year, and they're begging me to let that happen, because it's not just me, it's other experts giving it to them. So, Dr. Garza, you are right for the fact that it is very specific when it comes to the teacher leaders driving it. I could talk all day long, but until it's each other doing it, that's what's most powerful.
Okay. Dawn, thank you very much. Appreciate your insights. This, I'll be very brief here, this was mentioned by Dr. Garza and by several others. The other bigger idea is to take what we learn and build systemic capacity. And so, we'll have folks from different departments and our regions participating in instructional rounds, and the leadership development component, and the accelerated school improvement timeline process, because those are good pieces that we want to take back to all of our schools to some, to some degree and some capacity. From here, I have a couple of recommended next steps, and then we're finished, at least the presentation piece. We'd really like to, with your permission, come back in September with the finalized data, to be able to show you our schools and our targets for this year, and just to have some follow-up conversation. From there, we'd like each year to be able to then do that same process, to be able to show you who we're focused on in terms of intensive schools, what those targets are, and whether we've met those targets or not. As Mark said earlier, the goal of some of these roles, like instructional coach and other pieces, is to work yourself out of a job, and so, we also, you've heard both these principals say they'd like to work themselves out of, and I have no doubt that they will. We recognize there'll be some, maybe some different schools next year, some that were previously targeted and moving from intensive out. So, we think it's important to continue to update the board with our progress and the goals that we've established with this initiative.
And before questions, I think I just wanted to, a couple of things. I'm not sure that the board has ever been provided a presentation on the design of PSI, or not in recent past anyway, right? So, we felt like it was important for you to see kind of the direction we were headed in the new project momentum, what the thinking has been around the design of that support structure, and knowing that we want to be accountable for progress. We want to know what's working and what's not working, and so I think that's a critical point also, is we want to bring to you, you know, the schools, where their performance is, and what our targets are, and then we can talk to you after a year, and let you know whether or not, did we make it or not make it in these schools, what really worked and what didn't work, so that we could use that learning to benefit the larger system. So, I want to thank, we've had a great team involved in the design work, and thank our principals for being here today.
Okay, I have Janie, Ted, then Dan.
Okay, I have a couple of large questions, and then smaller questions. First of all, this is really very exciting, and very much appreciate the really focused, targeted approach with all of this. Okay. Sort of the big issue, because we will be asked by the community, why the change, and obviously, the issues coming from the state. So, it's my understanding that the changes in expectation from the state are coming because we are now into the third year, since the changes in the state standards test, what have you, and so you can't reach back for an average that goes back in the year before the standards were changed. Correct? Yes? I mean, that's, that's one of the issues, when we are looking at a three-year average, we are now having to face fully going forward, the changes that the state has made in the expectations for children.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Will any of the changes in NCLB and the reauthorization, however that the dust settles, will that have any impact at all on the state expectations? Or what we really are looking at is basically the Virginia expectations, because that will be a question asked of us.
It's mainly the Virginia expectations, so the NCLB part will not affect the VDOE requirements.
Okay, so this is a VDOE requirement, all right, that solves that problem. And then, when VDOE, when they changed the standards and changed the test in 2011, there was always the question about the common core, and were the new state standards high enough? In other words, would they actually meet the crosswalk for the higher-level skills that everybody is talking about nationwide? And at the time, we were told yes. Is that still, in other words, do we expect to see the state change these standards again? Or are we going to kind of pedal to meet these standards for a while, or are we going to get two years into this, and the goalpost's going to move again? Because these are tough standards, but they're good standards, but that's...
I would say the answer to all those is yes, because what will happen is, this is not a static conversation.
Right.
The federal standards are likely to change at some point. We've seen things are starting to change a little bit at the state level, for example, the elimination of the five test. How will that affect accreditation? But we can't wait for all that to settle, because the spring and summer are critical times to get ramped, these schools ramped up. So, we have to at least apply some criteria for selection of these schools.
Okay, so the answer is, we don't know. But, the question, the answer that was given to us years ago, was that the new state standards are a credible crosswalk to what we see as the common core standards in terms of rigor. That was what was told us years ago, and that is still the belief? So, if the community says, how good are these standards?
Right, I would agree with that. The other thing that I'll respond to, regardless of what changes come, I feel like we have a great model that's transferable. Because the instructional rounds and the ICLE model, they get at school-specific root cause issues, and the way that's structured, regardless of what schools are there, what the standards are, I think we've got a great model in place to address that.
Right, okay. It's just so that as we go forward with this, the community will ask why.
Right.
Okay, so it's credible, in other words, the goalpost that we're looking for remains a credible goalpost, good for kids. These strategies will help us to be strategic in how we help our children actually attain what, in the portrait of a graduate, we are reaching for higher standards. Okay, all right. Another quick question, then, the state in determining these categories are using two different ways. One is Title I, which is a poverty designation, and then looking at SOL scores, and then looking at the accreditation points, which has a gap. So, they're basically two different tools to try to identify the children who we need to work the hardest on, is that correct?
Correct. The accreditation benchmarks of 75, 70, 70, 70, and then gap points within...
Right. Okay, so trying to cover, making sure that we don't leave any kids out. Then, the last piece, it's my understanding that we, a lot of this, we've been, we were doing this year, in other words, we were taking resources that, the PSI resources that were already in the budget, we've already begun to change some of our practices to try to do a better job with what we've got.
Absolutely.
Okay, because I had a question from the community. And the other, just a quick question, it was asked, Hyblavally, Crestwood are not part of the targeted group, because they are fully accredited?
They are fully accredited.
Okay, great. There may be more questions, but I don't want to take up any more time. Thank you, this is great.
And the principal of Crestwood?
He's shaking his head.
He's like, yes, we're out.
Okay, Ted, Dan, then Illyon.
So, I want to start with the instructional rounds. I know Tony Wagner talks about learning walks. Is this the same thing? How is it similar?
They are not learning walks, so, learning walks...
Educated, non-educated.
Yeah, so, learning walks, you may walk into a school, 10 of us go into a school, would take a broad swath of, let's observe 20 classrooms, and then we come back and just, what did we learn, what did we glean, deliver a report to the principal, and then you exit. Instructional rounds really engages the school teams into, I'll pose a very simple scenario. Something that we might ask ourselves when we go into any school is, are the students engaged? But every one of us around this table might have a different definition of what student engagement might mean. So, if you say to a school principal or a school team, your students weren't engaged, but you can't define what that is, that's a problem. So, part of instructional rounds is coming up with, what evidence are you looking for to determine high-quality tasks, rigorous questioning student engagement? So, you engage in that first before you even set foot into a classroom. That is critical if we're going to move this work forward, so that one group doesn't go into a school and says, one thing, the students weren't engaged, another group goes in, there was moderate engagement, but really, what does, what does that mean?
So, a key component of instructional rounds is looking for evidence, and how do you train teachers and the school leadership teams to look for evidence to support whatever problem of practice they identify as needing improvement?
So, for the second part of my comments, I'm going to try to stay on task here. All of the state stuff, just, it's very distressing. It's kind of like having Solari looking over Mozart's shoulder and telling him how to write music. So, my concern is that we're getting false positives and false negatives. In other words, schools where, in fact, if we were evaluating those schools, we'd walk in there and say, you know, the people here are terrific, and they're doing the very best job that they can, and yet, somebody from the outside is saying that the school is failing. And likewise, there could be schools that, because the SOL results are just fine, where there are real problems in the school, and they're getting, they're getting passed by. So, I'm very concerned that we misallocate resources, and then when you look at the ultimate sanction of restructuring, it seems to me that this forms a disincentive for a talented principal to go into a school with very challenging conditions, because you could be in one of those false positives, and then end up being sent out and humiliated because they closed your school or whatever.
Dan, Illyon, and then Megan.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking. Karen?
I was just going to say, I agree with you, Mr. Velkoff. I agree. This is our current reality, though, you know, and this is, this reality gets really tough to live with, when you're one of the principals that have been, you know, designated. While we disagree with the system, current system, it is our reality, and therefore, it is our responsibility to support our schools that are in this circumstance, in much more intensive and different ways, so that we can help them no longer have to bear this burden of, albeit a very limited, narrow view of a school, it's our reality. And so, that's, I think, we don't disagree with you, we just know that this is our reality, we need to influence it differently, I think.
I'm trying hard to behave.
Dan?
And I absolutely know it's our reality, and it's frustrating, when you, I've been out, obviously knocking a lot of doors lately, talking to folks, and a lot of folks who either don't have kids in school, or could have kids in school, and don't send kids to school, and their number-one criteria for assessing that, frankly, is a number score from great schools or whatever, and I, it makes me ill when I, when I hear that, because I recognize that that's one measure, and frankly, a very narrow measure, but to my mind, it gets back down to how the state has perverted the whole SOL process, really, without any really public conversation, dialogue, et cetera, about what it is we, what SOL should truly be. And again, accepting that that's where it is, and hoping that our state legislatures can, legislators, we can get them to change that and focus it on what we believe it should be, but barring that, we have to, we have to meet those needs, and, which comes back to what is we're doing, and I understand the basic criteria for why a school is in an intensive program, because it doesn't meet the, one of the two Title I criteria, the 5% or the 10%, but I have to admit, I'm not really clear about our other criteria. You mentioned in slide eight, I believe, that, I'm sorry, excuse me, in slide 10, you say, I'm sorry, you, I missed this, it must be page, it must be eight, sorry, I missed it. You identify the criteria that, it's just, I'm missing the definition that you're using. It's six? It's six, all right, it's all right, thanks.
Can I look at 16? What the criteria for...
16, better than six. Six is broader, but, all right, let me go to 16.
Sorry, are you asking about the last two?
Yeah.
Gap points and missed AMOs?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I just, I guess, to me, it's, I understand what we're using, and, but, but, these are the most needy kids because of the state's expectations, but are they truly the most, are they the most at risk, or is it they, are they just the neediest at this moment in time? In other words, you can't have more than X number, so even though others could be part of that, you've narrowed it down to these, because they, they have, seem to have a more difficult time achieving this objective, i.e. of meeting the state standards?
I'd say they're the most at risk of having to face state reconstitution. So, they are the schools that are going to be in year three of accreditation with warning, or going into year two. And then, the other schools, the ones that hit the 5, the 10% mark of the focus schools, those are the Title I schools that are in the lowest 10%. So, that's, it's all based, what we wanted to try to do was not make it an emotional decision, was make it a very strategic decision, based on the same data that the Virginia Department of Education is using, so we have a very consistent application to all our schools. It's not something that we, some metric that we came up with.
So, I go back to PSI, before that Project ESOL, and before that, I'm not sure what they had, but, the, what I find is that we are continuing to struggle, I know as all school systems are struggling, to finding a method or a process that keeps our needy schools ahead of this curve of meeting state minimums, and we all know accreditation has a huge impact. Again, when I'm knocking doors, that's, that's the kind of thing I hear, because I hear that. They don't understand what else is behind that. How do we, how do we believe, or why do we know that this system truly is going to get us to the next step? Because, I'm sorry, I don't believe it's enough. I mean, that's kind of where I'm going, let me just put my cards on the table. I think unless we do something to attract, incentivize our best principals, attract and incentivize our best teachers, and we truly make this an easier road to go, it is going to be incredibly difficult. Why do, why do we get new teachers, and some great new teachers in some of these schools, and why do they leave after a while? Not because they don't care deeply about the kids, or want to try to make it happen, it's just, they have to work so incredibly hard, and sometimes their work doesn't show up in the results that the kids are experiencing. And I can't imagine, and I know, I live that every day, at least on one piece of that, with what my wife does, but, but I know that it really is a struggle, every single day, to feel good about that, and not find some other way to reward, or acknowledge, or incentivize these folks for taking on our most difficult challenge. Dawn, I'm going to use you as an example, if anybody has been to Woodlawn Elementary School in the last year, and thinks that somehow or other, and we may, we may get a miracle here, but thinks somehow or other, those, the kids that have been there, that have been in that school, working around the construction, and everything else going on there, are somehow going to pull, you know, a proverbial miracle out of their hat, and really do substantially better. And, look, I hope that's true, but I don't know, I don't know how you do that, I'm sorry, you know? And I've been there when... And I've been there when, and the kid, I just, it's just an incredible challenge. And I look at that and recognize that what she's gone through, and her staff has gone through, and I know they've had some help, but we're not talking about just renovating a wing of a school. We're talking about rebuilding the school that frankly should have probably been torn down, so, and build a new one. So I guess I'm getting, I'm giving you kind of an emotional argument, but I'm also giving you the quantitative argument, which is, this isn't enough, and I know we have to go more than this. I know this is the next step. I also know that money has been incredibly tight, but at some point in time, we have to step up and say, "Look, this is not going to work unless we do something far more than what we've done." And so maybe my question is to you, Dr. Garza, I know you bring a lot of different resources, a lot of different experiences into this mix. I know we've had some conversations about how do we get the best of the best to go to the neediest of the neediest? And where are you all with this conversation internally? Because I know this is one piece of it, and I'm not-
One piece of it. And I'm glad you brought it up, Mr. Stork. This isn't everything that, you know, everything, this isn't the entire universe of work that needs to be done in our system. This is some strategic work around some certain schools. But if you look at the draft of the strategic plan, we know we're going to have to differentiate compensation in core areas, in hard-to-feel positions, in struggling schools. We've got some work to do on that. And I think we're a year away from getting to that place, because those are, it's easier said than done, because you have to come up with systems that are fair to employees, or the very thing you wanted to do to incentivize employees actually becomes a demotivator. So you have to have a system that's fair. I think we've got to get there. That's what I hear from principals all the time, particularly in these same schools we're talking about. Help me keep my, help me keep my great teachers that I invest in. So I think that's key. I think some of the work we're doing around principal selection that I mentioned to you all on Saturday, you know, that's, that's got to improve too. So this is, this is one piece of this larger puzzle, but it's an important piece of it because it's how we're spending about $4 million of our budget every year. And that is, how do we help really support in intensive ways these principals who are great at what they do, but recognizing that they need something, it's just like our children. So we know that, you know, two children raised the same family, they have different needs, and we have to differentiate for their needs. The same thing for our school. So, piece of the larger puzzle.
And I get, I get that this is the next iteration of PSI, and it sounds like it's an improvement over the previous iteration, and I'm not here to criticize. I just, I'm not, I don't believe it's enough, and I don't think, I think we have to do more, and I'm frankly concerned about having to wait much longer to do that, because we know that this is not going to get better, not in the short term, unless we figure out a formula that truly works more dramatically than what we have. We see the path. It's, in fact, until this presentation, I didn't really have a sense of really the degree of the challenge that we had in front of us. I really didn't. I was more isolated into the particular schools in my community, and recognizing that we have issues there. But this is a much bigger picture. It actually is more helpful to me as a board member to see truly the challenge in front of us.
I'm maybe a little bit more optimistic about, I get the sentiment, and I certainly, you know, the frustrations are one I know that we all feel on occasion. Don, maybe, and Alex, maybe, in your seats, maybe more frequently than some of us. I have seen this, I know what the evidence suggests. I know with regard to the design, we've been very thoughtful about how to provide the support in a way that makes a difference. It's worked in other places. So even though I think we do need all of these other components and pieces to really take us to the next level, I do believe strongly that if we continue this work, that's, some of it's already been underway this year in terms of kind of restructuring, but continue this work moving forward, we're going to make a difference. We're going to make a difference. We're going to see more and more students being successful in all of our schools. It would help if we had the resources we need, you know, to increase teacher pay overall. You know, I'm very concerned about losing teachers to other surrounding jurisdictions. You know, that's probably my most, you know, what I'm worried about the very most. I know that our principals are. So, yeah, I mean, your point's not missed on me.
And I thank you. I just, I'm sorry, I deeply appreciate what's been done here. I don't think it's adequate for the challenge in front of us, and I think we have to do something more than this. And I'm, as a board, I think we need to have that conversation too, even though recognizing our resources are as limited as they've been. So, thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to kind of tell everybody where we are so we can consciously make a decision of how we want to do this. We are almost 45 minutes behind where we're supposed to be. We were supposed to start the audit presentation about the math program at 4:00. Then we had scheduled for public engagement to start at 5:30, and then we have a closed meeting. So, you know, it seems like the conversation's getting broad about students' needs, and I don't know if we want to be more focused right now to focus on this program, and if we have questions about that. I mean, we're the board, we can take as much time as we want to talk about this, but we still have a long evening in front of us. And I just wanted to raise that awareness as we move forward, if you keep that in mind. I have Illy Young, then Megan, then Elizabeth.
Thank you. I'm going to be, I'm going to be very succinct and very brief. Mr. Stork has stolen my thunder. I was going to talk about something we could do. Students that come into school buildings and classrooms, we do not have a control over. We teach whomever, whoever walks into the door, as is. But we have a control over whom we select our teachers, who we, you know, whom we retain, and how we support them. And that, I think more should be done for, you know, some of, all of these very schools with very high challenges. Since, you know, Dr., you know, Superintendent does not disagree with Mr. Stork on that point, I'm not going to, I'm not going to labor on that any further, but let me just ask you, you know, a couple of very basic questions. When a school loses accreditation, what does that mean? Is that, is that, is that losing of a funding if we don't do anything? If we keep those schools, might have lost accreditation, but when I keep it, when I keep it going, then is that just a funding? We are losing the funding for that, that particular school from the state? Or is the whole system is losing the funding, or?
No, it's, don't, there's no funding lost necessarily. It's just how much control we have over the fate of the school is lost, because now other people can come in and tell us what we have to do, number one. Secondly, it's a public relations challenge that is very difficult to overcome with regard to trust and confidence in our schools.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. And just one last one. You know, over the weekend, I think Dr. Lockhart and Dr. Presidio sent me some information, I did a request, about test scores of these 18 schools on the list. And I see there are some, you know, some school, some scores going down, but, you know, many schools also show scores going up, are still on the list. Some scores remaining about even. Could you tell us that, you know, could you conform with me that the fact that these schools on the list does not mean that all of these schools, test scores are declining? There are schools showing test scores going up.
That's, that's correct. So it's a mix. So just depending on what school you select here from our intensive list, they might be making some progress in math or English, but it's not enough. Or it's not, it's not to the point where it's gotten them out of the accreditation issue. And you're right, Mr. Moon, it is a mix. The 18 schools in the intensive supports, some are making some steady progress, some are about even, but some are trending downward as well.
And also still our schools which are making a progress in one area, but losing ground in another.
Right, just like Don had exemplified, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Megan, then Elizabeth, then Pat.
First of all, Ms. Smith, thank you for trying to, you know, give us perspective on our timing of the agenda. And so to my colleagues, I would just say that I have greatly appreciated in the last three years when we've worked together, everyone's commitment and concern for closing the achievement gap. And I would say, based on today's presentation, it would be my humble request that we're going to have to have a follow-up work session, because I feel like all we did was scratch the surface here. And, you know, I'll ask my questions, but when I think about the body of work we've done in three years, and just listening to everybody's desire to have the conversation now, I think we absolutely will benefit from having another work session on this. I want to thank George Becerra, who's one of my Braddock constituents, who represents our district on the MSAOC. And he sent a wonderful list of questions that I believe my colleague, Ms. Strauss, has now forwarded on for staff to answer to. And then he also provided me with a few additional questions that I will also forward on to everybody. So I just want to touch on some highlights. To praise the work here, I will first say, Dr. Garza, with your highly capable leadership, I have confidence we're going to get where we need to go. And I very much appreciate the time of the principals being here to talk about it, as well as the leadership team here. And so I'm going to stay optimistic. But I don't know if I'm echoing Mr. Stork and/or Mr. Moon, so you can nod, no, gentlemen, if I start going and you say that's not what you were thinking. But I feel like this presentation just gave us the most macro-level, 100,000-foot, here's sort of a framework. But I could not go back to Braddock District and say, here's, here's this, you know, new project momentum in terms of, with some specificity. And when I looked at the FCPS website to understand in current form PSI original, PSI 2, closing the gap 2.0, I couldn't get to nuts and bolts and data on actually where we are with our achievement gap. And maybe it's housed somewhere else, but I think that's an example of it's not where it needs to be. So even trying to have the discussion of, are we all on the same page of where, what our gaps are? What are we using to identify the gaps? So just to be specific, like slide 16 here, we talk about tiers of support and the criteria, but I guess I would ask, what about, how are we looking at poverty levels in the schools? Students with disabilities, and, you know, those gaps there? Mobility within a school? Like, are those criteria that we're also looking at for tiers of support? If we are, then how does it get incorporated? So that would be, again, I don't think you have time to do it today, but I'll lay that out there as sort of a first question. I don't know if you want to answer it, if you want me to just kind of rattle off questions. Okay. The other thing is, the slide beforehand, when it said principal perspective in the PowerPoint, it was saying perspective of the current support received this year, how it's been different, and then the support for this new direction. Again, without a report, I can only go by the PowerPoint. Anyone who wasn't here, and even then, it, there's nothing tangible. Like, I would have liked to have actually had something that said, okay, what is different? So I think there's maybe some, there's a lack of information that would have been helpful. The other thing is, for example, elementary schools instructional rounds, on the next slide, number 17. And then the International School for Leadership and Education. I mean, because we're not education experts, I mean, we don't have this information from us. So I guess I, wondering how we could have come away from this, having an understanding of it. It's just a title. I don't know what that means, without a report or something.
We can certainly provide you more information on all of these. This was supposed to be a high-level report, right? We could spend all day on just this one report. But we're trying to fit something in this timeframe, limited timeframe, that exists with our current work sessions, okay?
I completely understand.
We can certainly come back and provide you additional information on instructional rounds, on the ICLE literacy work. We're happy to do that. PSI, we can actually provide you a briefing on kind of where we've been. But I will tell you that it's been largely pretty scattered with regard to, it's largely been about, we'll provide you an instructional coach, and here's some money to go do what you need to do in your school. It's impossible for us to measure its effectiveness when it's done that way.
Exactly. And I think that's what, I again want to compliment you for what you're showing us today, which, again, structurally, high level. This is, you're trying to say to us, you can be well-intentioned, but if you do not have a framework and an actual structure in place, then that's about where you're going to stop at. So I don't discount that this is a great framework. I'm just saying for those of us, because we don't do your day-to-day work. And so these are terms that, if this PowerPoint were reflecting an actual written report, that I could have then gone in and read the meat on the flesh of the bones of this, then maybe it would allow our board to have a more engaged dialogue with each other and with all of you. I feel like we only see the first layer, maybe is, I think what I'm trying to say. And this is, I believe, one of the most important things that are, that this board has wanted to really help support the superintendent's work. But if we don't have the information, we can't be engaged with you on it, and the public won't be able to either. Slide 18, when it talked about the timeline, and was saying, just kind of describing it, it talked about drafting next year's goals, and then reviewing the goals and strategies. I guess my, my initial concern was, if, can that sometimes be too esoteric? Is it too high-level? Or is it just, again, the way it was presented, but that the schools actually know, we're really trying to drill down to, what does your data say about your gaps? And about, you know, where, where you are in terms of the accreditation warnings? And then it's the specific steps to address it. Because we've done a lot of goal conversations with this board, and so sometimes I see that, and I worry it's just language, but not targeted. And Mark, you nodded, so I'm now going to point to you. You wanted to give me?
I was just going to say, the schools know that, for that question that you just asked, the schools definitely are using that time to go very deep into individual school data, to try to make sure that they're creating a plan going forward to address specific curriculum needs for those kids.
Okay, great. The last two things, real quick. It's my understanding that Virginia Department of Education has turnaround centers. Have we been talking with Virginia's DOE about these turnaround centers, and how that might complement the work we're doing?
We've looked at turnaround models all throughout the country, not just in Virginia. And I will tell you that, as I think, Terry, you pointed out earlier, there's no one thing that says, this, if you do this, it's all fixed. Most of the time, it's about leadership, a quality principal, great teachers, and having instructional focus. So what we're, what we've described in here is very much in keeping with what most turnaround models suggest, whether it's Virginia, whatever they're doing, or we've been looking at that throughout the country.
Okay, and the last question I'll just ask is that, in terms of fidelity, because sometimes we know we have great success in any one of our 196, 98 schools, and then it's, you know, being able to take that best practice and achieve it. In terms of project momentum, at some point, are there going to be measures that you've said, okay, when this school is? Because it's not just VD, you know, Virginia Department of Education accreditation concerns I have. I could look at something as simple as the AP, you know, pass exam rates, where you've got, how many are failing and not getting above a three or more? That, to me, is, you know, a key driver? So, yes, so high-level wise, I'm trying to figure out, are, we don't see it today, but is that something that's part of project momentum, which at the high school level?
In fact, on one of the slides, it shows that in September, we're going to bring you, each school has been identified, where they are currently in their performance measure, on performance metrics, and then what we're suggesting that they, their targets should be instructionally for this program. So you'll see all those metrics in September.
Okay, so that, I think, Ms. Smith, is kind of what I was hoping to understand, is that we don't have measures right now for what project momentum will be, but the elementary, middle, and high schools, obviously will have different measures because, but those will be standardized across the schools that are being identified. So we'll say, hey, if you are one of your project momentum schools, and you are a high school, here are the measures we're going to want to be looking at for your progress?
I think that will have to be a little different per each school, because how far they are from the standard is going to be different based upon the school. Okay?
I got him, I got him.
I would say, hold that thought. In September, in September, we'll be able to show you why they might have to be different for different schools. schools. Just because they, you know, some schools may be 20 points from where they need to be, another may be 10 points from where they need to be. So our targets may have to be different. Yes, yes.
Okay, I have Elizabeth, Pat, then Patty.
So I'm going to actually slightly, not disagree with my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, but we've never had this report before, so we don't have a benchmark over, you know, what to expect. So on the one hand, I appreciate tremendously. I do think that, two things I would have liked to have seen. Even as high-level as it is at an initial phase, one is, what are the financial resources that are associated with these schools? In terms of what you already have, and what you're thinking you're going to need? Because really, this is where the rubber meets the road, in terms of, these are, they're not failing schools, you know, they're project momentum schools, whatever. But at the end of the day, there is some attribution of additional staffing, and that's a big part of the discussion of this board, is the staffing model, the staffing model. You know, they're Title I, they're all Title I schools? No, not necessarily. So differentiation, here's the ones that are Title I schools, and the additional monies and staffing they get because of that, and there's still a gap. And so there have to be appropriated monies. And then on the other side, the ones that are not Title I, and what the gap is there? Because there's a, if there's a staffing gap or a resource gap, because I don't have it in context for what it means. I mean, we can be innovative, and Mark, you know, I know you're, you know, the king of innovation. But at the end of the day, what does that mean? You know, am I having to appropriate local funds and buy down class sizes even further? I don't have it in context. Do we have kids in classrooms that are 17, and they're still not successful? And with whatever staffing, are they not successful because of the staffing, because of the innovation, because of the curriculum, because of their economic or social disadvantage? What is it? Because otherwise, what's going to happen from a stakeholder and from a board supervisor conversation, and this is a particularly sensitive time for us, is somebody will do the calculation, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, you have X many teachers, you have X many students, Y aren't your classes, you know, 14? And this will be one of the examples that buy into that problem, is, are they not, are we not being successful closing the gap because we're just not putting enough money to it? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. And I know you have a report forthcoming to us on small class sizes, and that will help explain that. But this is the notion of, do you, can you even close the achievement gap? Or do we need to be a little bit more politically and intellectually courageous and say we can narrow the achievement gap? And what is the expectation of where we are and how we get there? So I know that's kind of like a nuanced, different component of it, but it's, from a board member, it's just looking at it from a different way. So that I would have liked, is what, you know, in a crass sense, it's a return on investment, but it isn't, you know, I'm trying to be, you know, a little bit more education-specific. Because at the end of the day, that's what we have to do. The other is, how did we get to here? Because, can we go to the screen? I'm sorry, I was on, we're having board docs problems. The screen that shows how many schools, like, there's something, something, something new schools, 17 new schools, or?
Slide 6, I believe.
Slide 6?
Slide 8.
No, not that one. So this, over time, how did we, did we get here? Because I can tell, the eight schools, they're year three. I know three years ago, we had eight schools. But other than that, I don't have, I don't know this in context. So some kind of chart that says, you know, five years ago, this was the status, four years ago, this was the status. Are we, you know, are we going up and down? Is this a roller coaster? Is this a trend? Is it, you know, did we just go off a cliff with that third bullet there? So something that contextualizes how we've done over time, and is this because of an FRM change? Is this because of a student population change? Is this because of a massive Level 1 ESOL increase? You know, what is it that's causing this? And so it in context with meaningful data, is how that translates, how we got here, and what were the conditions? Because then that allows us to be strategic in our planning and our communications with the board supervisors, saying, if this is where we've arrived in, I don't know, two years or five years, and the population trends are this, whether it's demographics, economics, you know, whatever, then we can see a precipitous, you know, increase in situations like this in the future. So two kind of contextual things that I would like to see as a board member, but otherwise, I mean, I understand this is the first time, and that we're navigating, but on a future thing, those are things that are helpful for me as a board member.
Pat, then Patty, then Sandy.
Okay, I'm sorry, my mouth is full. I was not expecting you. Sorry.
Expecting me to be succinct.
Yeah, I was expecting to get a few more bites in there, actually. Anyway, thank you all very much. This is difficult work, obviously, and it doesn't ever seem to get any easier, on the contrary, right? I just had a couple of questions to start with. It seems that all of the decisions made to categorize these schools, it's all SOL test score-based data. I really know, okay, all right. So my, I guess my worry, or my question is, what is this actually going to look like at the classroom level? When we do this intervention? Because what I worry about, having been in the classroom, is that when we start to push those bubble kids, you know, to pass the test, we end up with sort of two schools, right? We end up with the school where the kids can do the Portrait of a Graduate kind of stuff, and then other kids are spending a lot of time in remediation tracks, you know? Now, I sense that this is not where we're going, because I did look up the Brockton High School thing right now on Google. And I think the focus on literacy tells me that what they're trying to do is to, you know, get those darn test scores up, but at the same time, teach some foundational skills that everybody needs anyway. So that makes me somewhat hopeful. And I know, I can't really take our time now for you to sort of describe for me what this looks like in every classroom, you know, in every school. But if I could just get sort of a sense from you about, you know, we talk about the Portrait of a Graduate, and we're so excited about these 21st century skills, and it's, I worry that it's a little bit heartbreaking to also be saying, oh, we're going to pour a lot of resources and time into classrooms that don't look like that. So can you respond to that at all?
Well, I mean, one, just living the world of being in these schools for the past seven years, and leading them, and teaching in them, that there's nothing about instructional rounds or the Brockton model that points to teaching to a test. You can't teach to the new SOL. And when we think about uncovering a problem of practice, some of the most frequent identifications of problem of practice are, how many higher-order questions are you asking of students in the classroom? If you only ask low-level, yes, no, who's the character, you'll never get to Portrait of a Graduate attributes. When you talk about relationships and some of the other drivers that we have in our Closing Achievement Gap Plan, a problem of practice could be, students aren't feeling committed or feeling a sense of community in the classroom. So that's step one, that they have to have a belief that they can achieve at high levels, that the teacher believes that they can achieve at high levels. So instructional rounds gets really at, what is the problem of practice? One of the things that you look at, like Dr. Garza said, is specific evidence. And one of your evidence points could be, just giving students ditto's and things that they're just copying, isn't going to get them to where we want them to for Portrait of a Graduate, and will lead them to meeting the baseline for state accreditation.
Well, great. I mean, that's the holy grail, right? Is to meet the demands of the state and the apparatus, you know, but also be doing what we know is important for kids. And I've always felt that a lot of these tests are fundamentally reading tests. It is literacy that gets them to do well on the tests as well, right? So I'll hold out hope that, of all the turnaround models out there, that maybe this is one that will do that for us. I kind of, looking at the Brockton High School, I just, I found a blog post about it, and it's very complimentary. One of the things I saw is that it was very important for the principal to keep the teachers. So it was not about throw everybody out and bring in new people, but get the existing teachers really involved and empowered to make the changes themselves. And so one of the things I was wondering, are we doing anything special about teacher feedback? You know, because we're kind of, I think we're starting a new model, you know, and so are we doing teacher feedback in any systematic way to ask questions like, how are teachers feeling like they're part of the planning and the design and the evaluation?
I mean, part of that's going to be the teacher leaders, and
Summer work.
And the summer, coming in over the summer and really owning what the plan is. So a principal coming in and saying, this is the plan for moving forward, or someone from central office comes across one way, but the Brockton model, they really do have a restructuring committee that is composed, comprised of a team of teachers, leaders, that they are the ones delivering the professional development. They're the ones to sit in those collaborative team meetings and say, we're kind of going astray from what we all committed that we were going to do at the beginning of the year. So that ownership really is a critical piece of it. And part of this model is empowering those teacher leaders to make the decisions that are right by the kids in their school, and not us coming in and saying what you must do.
Which is key. Anything you visit on teachers is, you know, may not happen, right? So, and with the Brockton model, it's happening in a high school, but we feel like we can translate it and use it in our elementary and middle as well? Just middle, okay.
Middle and high school. The instructional rounds will be in the elementary schools, and then the Brockton model will be in our two secondary schools and our middle school.
Okay, so, all right, well, I have a lot more questions, but we'll follow. That's fine, thank you. Just getting to what it looks like in the classroom, obviously, is a huge conversation, and we don't have time for it. But thank you for trying. I wanted to also ask, and this is my last question, included as part of this, do we have any strategies or resources to address things sort of outside of school? And I'm thinking of pre-K and, you know, outreach to families. I know we do a lot of that anyway in these schools, right? We are trying to bring in families. But is this, I guess we're spending about $4 million a year, is any of it going to go to enhance that part of what we do?
Right, we have a, there is a preschool piece of this that's traditionally, do you remember how much it funded? Was it two additional pre-Ks?
I'm not sure if Kristen's back there.
Kristen's going to weigh in here. Eight classrooms, okay.
So from PSI, we previously funded five preschool classes, and we will continue to fund those. So while we didn't add new, we will preserve that funding moving forward.
Thank you.
Patty, and then Sandy.
This is a good discussion. I feel like we could spend a whole day on it, but trying to stay focused, and just following on what a few things that my colleagues have said. First of all, very good presentation, and it's very exciting to hear what you all are doing. And it's clear from the principals that it's making a difference. So kudos, I think, need to be said, because it's not easy to make changes, as we all know. That being said, my colleague, Ms. Hines, was just talking about whether or not other services were being offered, and I wondered whether or not we should raise to the county the idea of wraparound services for some of these schools? Because it seems to me that their needs are greater than just what the school system can provide. Is that something that you would agree with?
Part of some of the root cause analysis that the schools will go through might identify some of those things that Ms. Hines and that you're speaking of. I know that in our strategic plan, we looked at on Saturday, we talked a little bit about, one of the goals has wraparound services, as something that we feel like would be beneficial to our schools.
I'm going to ask Dr. Dockery just to speak on that a little bit, because I got an update a little, a few days ago from the Skip committee, and that's specifically what they're talking about, the wraparound services. And Dr. Dockery?
So there's a couple of things. First, within our Title I, we're also doing some more central support for schools with social work and wraparound. But then specifically within Skip, and I was actually working on a response, they have increased on the county side, the neighborhood school and readiness teams and positions that would go for supporting the intake of students and the support to parents and their relationships with schools. So they have aligned with our five regions and are increasing capacity. And they're actually recommending, and the Board of Supervisors currently has in its budget about $700,000 towards those neighborhood readiness teams and the work around pre-K.
Excellent. No, I'm not finished yet. Can you all summarize for us maybe some of the characteristics of the schools that are the most at risk? Your momentum schools, not, I've heard now, not all of them are Title I, but it is, low poverty, I'm sure, is a characteristic. Are there other characteristics, maybe, that seem to be apparent across those? For example, high Level 1 ESOL?
Yes, high poverty, high mobility, high second language learner, more teacher turnover than other schools, because these are tough schools to work in.
Yeah, right, and that doesn't surprise any of us, I don't think. But Teri, for you in particular, my question is, have we looked at some of the past programs? And Mrs. Schultz alluded to this. She was talking about maybe some of the current programs, but I'd be interested in the past programs. For example, Graham Road, that used to have the modified calendar. And they used to be a blue-ribbon school that the president attended. And now they're showing up as a list of, on the targeted list. So I guess my question is, in your free time, maybe, would you all consider looking at perhaps some of the programs that we took away, or, you know, some of the supports that maybe have changed throughout the years? And to see whether or not, you know, any of that would be viable going forward? And Teri lived that, so that's why I'm putting him on the spot.
And I'm probably not the best example, because I remember coming into Graham Road, it was just when we were getting off of year-round calendar, and we still had a pretty good achievement rate, so we didn't say that year-round schooling contributed to us declining in test scores. We showed kind of the contrary, but I think a look at extended time is something that we have researched around the country, that sometimes you just need more time in schools, what we do during summer vacation, which is a vacation for some students and not a vacation for others, and how that contributes to how they start the school year. So I think we look at all those factors, and how we can use our current resources to address as many as we can.
Yeah, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, Teri.
No worries.
But it does beg the question, a school like that, just as an example, you know, what has happened over the past few years to make a difference? And they've moved to another location, you know, their demographics have changed, they're up 81% FRM, for example. So at any rate, it would be very helpful, I think, as we go forward, to try to do almost like little mini case studies on each of these schools, or to characterize them on their long and winding road. I'm getting no reaction from my colleagues at all. I'm trying to be, okay, yeah. Let's see, last, no, two more things. I'm sorry, Mrs. Smith, I'm sorry. I'm trying to be quick, but these are all very important, and this topic is very, very important, I think, and near and dear to all of us. And the relationship with other programs like the the Closing Achievement Gap projects, and needs-based staffing. To me, if these are our schools that are, you know, I would venture to say are most at-risk schools, then, to me, it would be very helpful, again, as part of this characterization, perhaps, for another time, to try to understand what we have done, and what we're currently doing for these schools. And now, you're doing even more, which is wonderful. But, that would be helpful, because I think oftentimes, you know, we just get things in piecemeal. We're doing this, and, you know, another time we'll hear about, well, we're doing that. But, do you know what I'm saying? Is that making sense to you, Dr. Gowers?
Well, the Closing the Achievement Gap Plan, I've seen the questions, and I think Dr. Presidio and Dr. Dockery would agree with me. You know, that's a strategic work that's system-wide, that is certainly complimentary of the work that's going on in these schools. So, it's not, we have to really caution ourselves, and we have to really use some discipline to say, it's not this or that, it's and, right?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
And I think we also recognize that in some, we need more intensive support in certain schools, and how are we gonna leverage that? Now, what we can learn, and hopefully now, we've created a system and a program that can be measurable, maybe then, once we've experienced it with these schools, to your point, maybe we find out that instructional rounds needs to be applied system-wide, maybe in all of our elementary schools. Maybe that's where we've seen the greatest difference in changing the differences between performance of student groups. So, I think there's a real opportunity for us to learn in these schools, to see what really works. And I think it could leverage and really inform our work around the Closing the Achievement Gap Plan, and some of that work that's underway.
Right. I agree. All I'm suggesting is that perhaps we understand the various types of approaches and programs that are being applied to those schools, just so we understand it. I think that would be very helpful.
Mrs. Reed?
I'm sorry, I know. Last, my last, and this is a comment. In three years, we spent $12.9 million on the Priority Schools Initiative. And from this presentation, I think all of us should feel very, very badly about that, because the results are, you know, not exactly earth-shattering, and you haven't been able to point to a lot. So, I guess going forward, I'm hopeful, and it sounds like we are learning from that experience, and we're being much more targeted. Isn't that right? I mean, you all, it was in your presentation, but no one except me is pointing it out, that in fact, we're moving in a much more targeted direction, and we'll be using our resources, yeah, in such a way that we can be impactful and also measure it. So, that's the good news, I think. So, okay, thank you.
Sandy?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate the presentation. I just wanted to get some clarity on some things. Of the schools that you have listed here, are all of them either intensive or targeted? The ones that you anticipate will...
All the schools here, the schools that, the eight schools in year three, and the nine schools in year two will be intensive.
Okay.
They would be intensive schools, because they would either be in year three of accreditation or year two. The 17 new schools would be targeted schools.
Okay. And what about the five focus and the...
The focus schools, there is some overlap. So, some of the focus schools are in, they're either
They're all intensive.
Second or
I see what you're saying.
Third year of accreditation, they would all be intensive.
So, all of them will be covered by one category?
There's only one focus school that's not accredited with warning.
Okay. I want to be sure I'm clear on the budget situation. How much is in the current budget, this FY15 for Priority School Initiative?
$4.3 million.
$4.3, and...
And it's been that same amount, I think, for many, or for a while, anyway.
Right.
But, it's $4.3 a year.
It's an annual, it's an annual amount.
And what's budgeted in FY16 for momentum?
Same thing, $4.3.
Same thing, it's $4.3, so no addition. So, it's just re...
Yes.
And so, is the, most of the funding, it's going for, if I'm reading the PowerPoint right, for instructional coaches, extended contracts, and time to teach for collaboration? Is that the key areas where we're spending funds?
Yes, and professional development and supporting in these new instructional models.
Professional development, okay, okay. I do share the concern that's been raised by a couple of my colleagues about both the false positives and the false negatives. You know, I'm seeing some very high-poverty schools and high-mobility schools that aren't on here. So, my next question is, how often are we planning to reassess? Is this gonna be an annual reassessment to see who goes in and who goes out?
Yes, it'll be every year.
Okay, so...
We'll have to look at where we are with our schools. Plus, the accreditation, we're kind of watching the way that the state and the federal government go with some of that moving forward.
Mm-hmm. So, that would be something we would see every September, or is it just this September that we're gonna be seeing?
I think it's annual. We expect to do this annual.
So, and every September, is that, that's the timeline for it? Every September, we would see a reevaluation? I guess this is a, I see that you say the role of the instructional coaches is critical. I wanted to see how that dovetails with one of the things that we do see in high-poverty schools, which has been alluded to, with getting a lot of new, young teachers who often burn out or leave. Are the instructional coaches as critical? Where you've got veteran teachers who are, who stay, or is this really a function of the fact that so many of our high-poverty or low-performing schools do have this constant, you know, coming in and going out? And I think Mr. Velkov sent us an interesting article the other day about the cost of teachers leaving schools. Do you understand my question? We're making the conclusion that instructional coaches are critical. If we, what I'm really asking is, if we could keep our teachers in these schools, if we could keep veteran teachers, would that have the same impact at lower cost, or would it not? Or do we know? Maybe we don't know.
Well, I would tell you that if you look at a differentiated compensation model that would provide greater compensation for teachers, to keep them in the hard, it would probably be at a much greater cost than what an instructional coach would be. I think we need to do both. But, instructional coaches, our most effective ones, really take a lot of the pressure off some of our teachers, and are really helpful with some of the data analysis, and some of the work that our teachers would ordinarily have to do by themselves without that kind of support. So, it is a, I think, an essential support structure for our teachers. It also has been proven across the country to really make a difference. As long as you pick the right people, it's kind of like the Sosis. As long as you pick the right person, and you invest in them, and help them, you know, as long as they have the capacity to support teacher improvement, the instructional coaching model really works well.
Okay.
I don't know if y'all want to add to that.
Well, and my last observation is, follows on what Mrs. Reed said. I do think that the issue of time is one that we need to reevaluate. You know, Park Lawn was another example of a school that had modified calendar, and I believe it was $200,000 a year. I could be wrong, because I'm doing this from memory. But, more time in school for the students, as opposed to some of these other things, I do wonder if we need to be evaluating that. That's what I, is that true? And then, the early start that we had at Stewart and Falls Church in Glasgow, I think, cost very minimal amounts. But, I'm not sure that was proven effective. Do you think, was it $200,000, is my memory right?
Okay, so, that seems like a fairly relatively low price for a lot more time in school for kids.
I just think my only caution, and why I'm so excited about instructional rounds, is if you aren't getting the absolute high-quality instruction that you want for a kid each and every day, you can extend the time, and you still won't get the results that you want to see. So, just extending the time, are the conversations that we've had, is really what is, what are instructional practices at the core level, at the intervention level, things of that nature. So, just extending time
Right.
Might seem like a fix, but what's happening during that time is even more important than the extended time.
Thank you for that observation. That's a good point.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciated the presentation. Good luck, Illyon.
We'll take a four-minute break.
Four minutes, huh?